Okay, a couple of agenda changes. So I wanted to remove item number 18, beekeeping in the village, and remove item number 19, safe streets, New Paltz initiative. Don, do you want to do anything with crosswalks, number 16?
Sure.
Keep that on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to also move number 15, reappointing Bill Murray and David Gilmore to the Holster County Planning Board, to the consent agenda. And then additions, I would like to add an item, and we could do this at the very end of the meeting, a rental registration form on our village website. Let's do this at the end of the meeting as well, a rec fee update from Don and Bill.
You do have that on there.
Where?
Number one.
Perfect, okay. Keep that.
Can I do a ZBA update?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
ZBA update from KT, so let's want to do that as 1A. Security deposit law as 1C. Valuation of the two buildings that we're getting appraised, let's add that, because that'll be quick, so that will be 1D. And for 5A, I would like to add additional information about authorizing us to pay chasin' regarding the pump tests that Plant do on October 16th. I'd like to motion we accept the agenda as amended.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, two quick announcements. There will be a franchise waste agreement, pre-proposal conference, on October 24th at 5:00 PM at Village Hall. Second announcement, the Halloween parade lineup will start at 5:45 at North Mannheim and Main Street. In the past, the lineup has started at the middle school.
All right, we can't get out that door now, then?
Yep. But also, the police chief said this morning at town gown that he actually thinks the parade will flow better coming off of Mannheim, North Mannheim anyways.
I think we do that for memorials.
Curiously, we do, yeah. And I believe that is it for the announcements. Anyone want to add anything?
I just wanted to let the public know that on Monday, there's going to be a debate on campus about the Constitutional Convention. There's been a lot of talk about the convention. And the statewide UUP president, UUP is the faculty union statewide, so the statewide president is coming to New Paltz to debate Jerry Benjamin of SUNY New Paltz. And that's going to be at 6 o'clock in the Coquendales Auditorium on campus, and it's free and open to the public.
Any other announcements? So we have a public hearing on the proposed security deposit law. So I'd like, I motion that we open that public hearing.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to make some comments? Andy, why don't you just come up and grab a mic, pull that reach over to the podium?
I could just need your...
That's fine.
We need it.
But you need to talk.
You need the mic.
Yeah, but I mean, I can.
You've got to be really close to the...
Oh, I do have to be, huh? Hi, I'm Andy Lawyer. I downloaded the latest version of the law, of the website today, and I wanted to know if this is the current version that you're using, if there will be any more changes or evaluations.
They're very well, but it might be changes, that's why we're having a public hearing.
Okay. Since my, the last time, the, I don't know if it was two meetings ago, or whatever, some of the comments that I know that we made, some of the landlords made since then, it doesn't look like any of them had been incorporated into the law, not that it's your guys' obligation to do such, but one of the things I had said, and I'm going to mention that again, to residential properties, because it still doesn't say that.
I think it's a law that falls under housing, so it's already assumed.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if it could be, you know, just...
It's in the housing section of our code.
Okay. But I mean, still, if it's a, defined as, you know, residential, you know, what if the situation is, or another way of saying is also maybe that it's the primary residence, and the consideration is that, for that is like, you know, is this law, the purpose of this law also to regulate Airbnb, or bed and breakfasts, or any other types of housing? So if there was just any sort of limitation of this law, to try and make it clear as to who it applies to, you know, just so that it's more understandable to people who are just reading it or implementing it. So that was, you know, to define the scope a little bit more, that would be some of my feedback. There was comment here in section C about the expiration of 14 days following the surrender of the lease space, or at the end of the lease, and there was a comment in here about needs to be surrender because the tenant failed to vacate upon the expiration of the lease. I would still like it to say, at the end of the lease, or later, or something like that, to indicate that if someone is trying to break their lease early, and they are vacating the space, that they may at least be due all of the rent, like, let's say they left three months early, that, you know, they still do that rent. And just because they officially leave and move out, doesn't mean that they get their security deposit back, even if they weren't damages. And so a little bit of clarity on that, if that is the intent of the law, so that they, you know, or not.
I think that's kind of covered, because the wording already identifies the end of the term for the lease. So if you break the lease early, the clock doesn't start ticking based on when you break the lease, it's still the end of the term.
Well, it does say here, you know, the surrender of the lease space, and then crossed out was and/or at the end of the lease.
Right, because we've been, we're still figuring out what the language should be, so that was just my way of saying, I don't know what we should put here, so none of it is written in the stone.
Yeah, I mean, just if there could be clarity to that, if, you know, even if under section A, under two, unpaid rents, even if there could be a notation under unpaid rents, indicating, you know, it's not just unpaid to the current month, but to the entire term of the lease. Yeah, I mean, just a little bit of clarity in that, in that regard, because it's a little bit cloudy. You know, this whole new paragraph that was added about when there's multiple leases and the responsibility of the landlord, three days notice of intent to surrender, that's, puts a lot of burden on the landlord in scenarios where, you know, if people are living, there's a certain right that people have to privacy, and if landlords are, you know, coming and going into people's spaces saying, oh, there's this damage, and, you know, there's still people living there. I think there could, you know, it just, it creates a situation that may make, you know, a potential, you know, situation get, I guess, not hostile, but, you know, there's a lot of confusion, a lot of things moving in, moving out, some students are leaving early, you know, it is nice to have a checklist of everyone, but I think if there is, ultimately, if someone does damage, you know, collectively, everyone is responsible in that property to, you know, help pay for those damages, you know, even if, you know, some person leaves earlier, they have to work together as a group to make sure that, you know, they collectively take care of the property. So, those are my comments.
I can let you know that the village attorney did advise us to keep that section out, that was put in, because Dennis, who's not here, wanted to react to some of the comments from last time about how you deal with shared space, so I don't think that particular section is going to make the cut, because the village attorney advised us against that, but if you have any thoughts on how to deal with that issue. And again, a lot of these issues that are coming up is, are we going to deal with it embedded in the law, or are we going to put it in like a guidebook so people have best practices? Because there's reason for putting things in, a lot of the reasons for not putting it there, but educating the public about it elsewhere. So that's still another one of those moving parts that we're not really, we know that that's an issue, but, and that was Dennis's first attempt of saying, hey, and the lawyer was like, yeah, that's not going to work. So we're still paying attention to it, but I'm pretty sure it's going to get cut.
Yeah, I think, you know, it would be a lot of work for you guys and for the attorney, but there's a, there's a fair, a finite number of, you know, cases usually, like, in the sense of how rentals are done. Either it's a apartment or a condo, and it's a single person or a couple. And then there are groups of people who come together and rent one home. And then there is the true, you know, housing unit, where people are renting it out room by room, each door has its own different lock on it, and it's not really a shared space. And each one of those scenarios have different, you know, characteristics, I know it's really hard to adapt a law to touch on all of those.
Are those typically in your experience? I know that you have no way of really knowing. Do they have individual leases, or one lease for the whole place?
Well, I think it's a mixture. The, definitely the individual rooms with the locks on, they will have individual leases, I think. Sometimes where it's one group of people who rent a house, sometimes it'll be one family unit that has a collective lease, and then each person just named on that one collective lease. And other opportu, and other times, because of shifting schedules, one person may start slightly, they're still collectively a group, but then there will be separate leases, even though it's one shared space, and they, they really do act as a unit, just for convenience of the individuals, and sometimes sizes of rooms are different, so the tenants will want to say, I'll pay $100 more for this bigger bedroom, and this person will pay $100 less, instead of just, you know, having the price for the whole house and then letting them divide it up. So a lot of times, it's based upon the...
I really don't want to get in the weeds here about the whole process of how landlords handle security deposits. Like, we're not trying to, like, reinvent wheels here. People have been renting apartment units for hundreds of years and returning security deposits in all shapes and varieties. All we're trying to do is to create a mechanism so that there's a defined amount of time. Like, we're not trying to, like, anticipate every possible business approach that a landlord, how they might interface with a tenant, that, that's not at all what we're trying to do here. So I think it's important that we don't, like, get in the weeds so much that we derail the intent of this law, that it's, it's a really pretty straightforward thing.
Well, I think when, when the fees start being associated, you know, and when there's different scenarios to consider, and you have these blanket rules, they don't always apply equally.
But, but these, these laws currently exist, all we're doing is we're connecting a timeframe to it. Like, there's currently penalties for someone who illegally holds back security deposits.
I, and I think that's good, but usually, there's someone who, like a judge, or some...
Yeah, absolutely.
Or someone that can have discretion.
And there will still be a judge.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's where it's a little bit unclear to me, a lot of these, you know, these fees, you know, are the fees subjective to a judge's review, or is it just something that will be immediately applied?
Always, always, as a judge.
No, but the way it's currently written in section B, sorry.
No, this is a public hearing, we're supposed to be hearing. As someone who has come up to this microphone, if you know you're going to get pushed back from the table, it's really intimidating. Let's, let's listen to the guy.
I thought it was dialogue, not pushback.
I was interested in the discussion, I'm sorry.
It's a public hearing.
That's great, Don, we're doing it differently. Okay.
I'm sorry, I was just saying that, you know, the way I read it, and I wasn't clear, and so maybe just a little bit of feedback was, that it looks as if these fees are immediate, immediate and effective, you know, not necessarily with a judge's review.
There's two pieces, as it's currently written, you're right, there's the trigger that automatically happens if you're late, and then in the next section, there's add the discretion at the judge. So you're right, that whole idea, and I've been wrestling with this, is like, how much of it should be automatic, and how much of it should be at the discretion of the judge? And I think we need a little bit of both, and we're still trying to figure that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm very comfortable with us keeping this public hearing open.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to ask that we get guidance from the attorney between now and the next meeting on the definition of a public hearing. Do you do it offline?
Anyone here for a public comment, generally? Come on up, Butch.
Thank you, I have a Yankee game, which takes preference over everything, so I will be as brief as possible. I commend you for sitting here while the Yankees are playing the fifth game.
Now we know who's going to be in a rush and why.
Oh, yeah. I was in a rush last night, and they weren't even playing. The irony of me being here to speak in favor of, of public television is not lost on me, and those of us who have been here longer remember the older days, pre-transplant Butch, during the planning board hearings, when I pushed back, and the first videotaping of meetings happened because the Merzkiites didn't trust me or my planning board, and they started to video from the audience, which of course created even more drama, but that's another story. That's how the videotaping really first started against me. So me being here tonight to speak is fun. I speak in favor of, of public television, the way it is on Channel 23, even with all the warts and all the pimples that it has, the sound issues and everything else, because I'm the guy who gets phone calls from people who don't know how to use really computers, and they're watching, they're older residents, they've been around a long time, they care, they can't use the computer way of doing it, nor can I, so we sit there and we watch Channel 23, and one of them is actually hard of hearing, so the, the audio problems don't bother them, but they say, who's that guy sitting there next to so-and-so? He used to come in my store. Or they call me and they say, what is this about? I see them talking, and I'm curious. These are people that, that really care about the community and follow what government does, but they can't keep up with all the technology. And 23 is, is really a lifeline to people like that. And I'm old fashioned, and I don't really, I mean, I have a huge problem with the town's email about the agenda, because I can't follow all that clicking and stuff, and there are a lot of people out there who can't do that. And besides me, who enjoy sitting home and seeing all of us on TV and, and doing what it is that you all do, it's informative, it's easy to get, to watch, and the rest of the station, the late night music, the, the other things that, that inform us, I find extremely helpful and valuable, and I really hope that you'll consider that when discussing future public access to, to the meetings and to our community. And I thank you.
Go Yankees!
Thanks, Coach.
Anyone else want to make a public comment? Okay, a motion that we approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
George and Tom, I'm going to move these guys out, they're number six. You guys want to come up and join us at the table? So George Seifert, Tom Murray, and Rich Rowley were interested in making a donation to our community. I'll let you guys turn the mic around, so you can...
Sure. Thanks for seeing us tonight on short notice, I can pass these out. This is a, sort of a cheat sheet on what we're talking about, it's not too monumental, hopefully, but, and hopefully good for the community. Yeah, you can pass those down, there's a few of those. And then there's, I've also got an instruction on how to install this, and then also, sort of the layout, so there's some additional information here, but we're out on, we do an annual trip, just quickly, we happen to pick this year Bentonville, Arkansas, which is a very bike friendly community. We were out there just a couple weeks ago, and we were riding around, we do a lot of mountain biking and road riding. We saw these things all over the community, they're, they're installed in sort of strategic spots, and George actually came up with the idea, and between the three of us, my brother-in-law Rich Rowley and, and George and I, said that, you know, well, let's see if we can donate one of these to the community, where can we put it in the community, let's reach out to Tim, who bikes with us on occasion, so we know him, we said, would this be of something, that we donate this, this particular piece of equipment, that literally is for the public use, it sits somewhere that's, that's logical to sit, and we thought it was near the, near the Water Street Market on the other side of the street, there's sort of an open space there, but we leave it up to you, but we thought that this might be something nice for the community have, where A, you sort of have the cross current of the bike trail, and then also the new trail going out into the field, so we thought perhaps down in that neck of the woods, and just to see if you had interest in us purchasing this for the community and then having it installed. And that's what we're talking about here.
Any questions from the board? Nice idea.
Yeah, as you can see, it's a bike repair station, and these two handles here, you clip your bike on it, and there's an air pump, and then there's all these cables, it's about 15 different tools that are on steel cables that pull out, yeah, that pull out, which is really, really nice.
Yeah, I included a picture there, and, and these are US made, they're made in Minnesota, you can go on their website, and there's a video there of, of the owner talking about the product, and literally, they were, they were installed, there's probably 10 of them installed all over this community and down in Arkansas, and it seemed to be, you know, it seemed to be a good idea, and, you know, would love to do that for the community if we could.
Do you know if it requires a pad to work on?
It does, and there's, there's instructions here, and then also the size of the pad, I didn't, I didn't put more than one copy, Tim, there, but it shows the, the size, you either can do it like almost a sonotube, or it looks like either a pad, I think there's two different choices there, and I don't know, we'd leave that up to, to your, the people.
Yeah, footing below four, down four feet.
Yeah.
It's the sonotube down four feet.
So what I did was, I, I shared this idea with the Walker Valley Land Trust, because they administer the conservation easement that, that the village has on our village-owned property, which is the rail trail. And then I also shared this info with the Walker Valley Rail Trail, their president, Michael Reed, as well as the folks from Rotary, if we're looking to do this next to the Rotary, even though it's on village property. So I'm going to meet with the Rotary folks tomorrow, show them, you know, roughly where it would be placed, and I ran it by our superintendent of public works, Blue To Williger, and he was fine with installing the stand, you know, if you guys were going to move forward with, with the purchase and make this donation to our community.
One of the most cool features in a college town was that the tools are securely attached.
Yes. Yeah. We'll see, see how that goes, but it seems to be...
That's what made it very interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
This is awesome, were you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. I just had a question about maintenance, like, who's going to pay attention and make sure it's okay, and we just heard about how you can't steal the stuff, but over time, just who's going to pay attention? It doesn't seem like something that requires, like, a lot of maintenance, but I just would like some clarity on who's responsible for checking in. You guys are probably using it all the time, so...
I would be more than happy if, if one of the cables breaks, or someone somehow moves a tool off the cable, left it, to order a new and repair it.
Yeah, and they have, I spoke to the company, and have had emails back and forth with them, because there's a lot of modifications, you can do these in terms of the colors, and either they can be, they can be galvanized steel that don't rust, I said, hey, listen, we're in a community where it's cold, it's rainy, it's icy, and they have actually a maintenance shop where they'll, they'll send you new tools to install, and they'll, they'll help you with the, the ongoing maintenance of it, at least for us to get additional parts, if somebody happens to clip one of the things and we've got to repair it, so we would, we would continue, we would do that.
We're more than happy to do that.
Okay. Maybe we just need, like, a sticker on it, something that says, call Villatoll if there's something wrong here, I don't know.
Well, we ride all the time, I think we'll check, we'll check on it all the time.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I keep realizing, maybe Tim will probably be using it, so...
Well, we could give Tom's home number.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. You still got it?
No, we got, we got to give my cell number, that's the only...
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation from Tom, Rich, and George, and we would take responsibility for installing it, and, you know, I'll confirm the location with the Rotary folks tomorrow, but, you know, let's move on this.
What else I could have?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thanks for putting this, putting this in so quickly.
Okay, so let's proceed with our update from Bill and Don about, you guys had an initial conversation about recreations.
We did, we sat down and, with the, at the building department, and a couple of the questions we had are, what are the systems that are in place right now to inform prospective builders and people who might come before the planning board about the recreation fee? What is the, you know, what is the SOP, standard operating procedure, about how people are notified of this? And what is the standard operating procedure as far as when is it collected? I know at our joint meeting, town and village meeting, we had the benefit of listening to Guy Kemp, who is an executive with RUBCO, and he said, to his understanding, the most common way of making sure the recreation fees are collected is to make it a condition of a certificate of occupancy, and it's just part of the package. And as part of our discussion, the question was asked with regard to current projects that may be in front of the planning board in various stages, are we secure that all those, all those applicants have been informed and are aware of the recreation fee, and know what they're up, you know, know, know what is before them? There's one particularly large project that's been in front of the planning board for a while now, and we were not reassured that all of the current applicants in front of the planning board are aware of their responsibilities with regard to rep fees, so that's a question we certainly felt very timely. Bill?
Yeah, I think we, there needs to be some sort of informational campaign, some sort of public awareness, when somebody comes into the office and they have a large project that would require, that might require a recreation fee to be paid, and they're informed of what it is, and what it's about, and how it's spent, and... of what it is and what it's about and how it's spent and all those details. We did discuss a little bit about the affordable housing reduction. You get a 50% reduction if your, if your, if your project has affordable housing units. It doesn't say in our code how many...
For the affordable units.
No, for those units, just to be clear.
Right, that's right. For those units, right. It doesn't state how many of those units. We get it, you know, if there's a minimum or a maximum number of...
I think it's just...
Just one for one.
Yeah.
One discount for one, right.
I have to check, but that's what I think.
Yeah, yeah. According to code, that's what it seems to me as well. But essentially, it's more about, at least in our conversation with building inspectors, informing people as they come in and keeping them up to date.
I really like the idea of us ending up with some sort of like one pager that, you know, we're able to, the building department is able to provide to folks who are filling out building applications. And then in addition, like if we're creating a policy, I really like the idea of the planning board communicating back to the village board how this is handled. Because currently, I believe there's some discretion the planning board enjoys as far as whether they levy these fees. So there may be circumstances where it makes tons of sense to collect a fee or not collect a fee. And I just think it would be great for everyone involved just to have a little bit of a paper trail that says why or why not.
Well, I know that, Tim, I've praised you, you know, back and forth every way to whatever the symbolism is, anyway.
Pick a planet.
Yeah, yeah. With the efforts over the last years to identify and collect unpaid for water in the village. And I see this as a similar issue. We do have a bunch of projects and one which has many, many units in front of the planning board right now. And I think it's critical for us to figure out in the very short term how we're going to address recreation fees with anything which is now in front of the planning board. It was, you know, it was not clear one way or the other. And there's one big project that probably comes to mind, whether that developer is aware of what's coming down the...
They should be aware. You may recall a while ago now, because they have been before the planning board for so long, we actually did a site visit with the planning board chair at the, one of the potential entrances to the Millbrook Preserve, where we were going to ask that developer for some in-kind contributions at the Millbrook. Like, you know, maybe it could be some work done on the multi-use trail that would be equivalent to the equivalent. So the discussion has taken place. So I would be surprised that that particular developer could not say that they were unaware.
We just saw a developer who was in the room who, you know, who I would imagine would have had great interest in this conversation, but there are other people who have things in front of the, in front of the planning board that we just need to tighten up our ship on this.
Yeah, we need, we need this on our website. We need this as a one pager to hand out in the building department. I think it would be great if you guys continued, almost just take from the code and just create a one pager and say, hey, building department, you know, print out copies of this and make sure you're giving it out to everyone and we'll put it on the website. Do you want to do that as well?
I don't mind doing the work, but I wonder if, you know, the people who administer this, the building department might generate that document? Because it's not my, you know, not my area, it's not my field. It is their field and I would hate to prescribe something...
I can revisit it, I can revisit it with our building inspector.
Yeah, I think...
Translate it.
I think what it is, is we need one of us from the village board to really be the taskmaster to wrangle that staff, to make sure that they do it. You know, ask them to do it and they'll say, absolutely, we'll do it. And then double check that they've done it and then make sure that, you know. I stuck something else here on this agenda tonight that I'm really surprised is not on our village website, so.
Is this something that maybe we might make a motion that a one-page document be created? That would ensure that it would actually happen in a timely fashion?
Sounds good.
So I guess the wording would be, I would make a motion that the village board in conjunction with the building department create a one-page, well, create a short document outlining standard operating procedure fees and requirements for individuals or companies that make a submittal to the planning board.
I'll say it.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah, and so for the purpose of discussion, I also want to emphasize that I view this as like our initial step to improving this process. I feel like part two is that we might want to take a closer look at our code on this topic and maybe limit some of the, you know, the reasons why we would or wouldn't collect fees. Because from what I understand, it, there's probably room to improve on the existing wording.
Um, I...
But I would really like the idea of tomorrow, having that one pager available using our existing wording and then taking a little more time to improve the language as necessary.
Yeah, I totally agree. You have to know where you are to figure out where you want to go. So if we have just a very simple, not in village code language, but in English that we can all read and understand what the parameters are, then we can talk about things like making it a condition of a CO, which I think is a brilliant idea. Although I'll remind everybody, the way that it is now is we do have two hits. Tim likes to call, you know, say we should call one the pineapple fee and one the rec fee. You know, it's if you, if you do a subdivision, if I understand it correctly, there's a rec fee. And then you may never develop that subdivision, right? So the reason to hit them then is because of that reason. There could be years and years, right? And then at the, there's a later. So there's sort, there's two hits right now. It's probably not the best way of saying it, but... So yeah, the one pager will help us understand that better and see where we can do interventions, either in tightening up the policy, more or less latitude for the planning board on giving applicants a pass or greater tighter parameters in which that happens. But this will help us see where we are now.
Yeah, I think it's important to emphasize, and this could be in the one pager too. And this is, this is something that, you know, we joke about this idea of, you know, using a different name. I like, my thing is I just don't like when different things use the same name. So we have two different types of rec fees. One is a rec fee at subdivision, which is $7,500. And then we also have a rec fee at site plan at $5,000 per unit. But they're both called rec fees. So I think that has created a lot of confusion for planning boards and building department staff and ourselves. So, you know, as an initial step, let's explain that we have these two different fees. They should be charged, but, you know, maybe that's an example of something that we need to tighten up and use a different phrase instead of rec fee for both of those two different things.
And to make this real, you know, for over a year, we've been looking for a source of funding to improve the pickleboard courts and our playground across the street is at the end of its useful life. It needs to be replaced. Wouldn't it be nice if there was a bucket of money from recreation fees that we could turn to in situations like that? That's the way it's supposed to be, but since things are not tightened up and we're not doing it as well as we could, that bucket of money isn't there. It should be.
No, the bucket of money is there, it's just a small pail. It's only like 40 something thousand dollars. It should be, to your point, it should be a proper bucket with a lot more than 40 something thousand dollars.
And well...
Based on the amount of growth and the amount of time that it took to collect that 40 something thousand dollars.
And the reasonable reaction to that is, so can we utilize those funds to replace our playground? I think it's like 60 grand, isn't it, or something along that?
It's like 40-ish, I think. That's all we have.
Let's take a look.
Yeah, no, no, we definitely have those funds and they are for expanding rec offerings. Rec fee is not supposed to be used for maintenance, but capital improvement, I think, are fine. So Bill is going to make sure that that resolution does not slip through the cracks. Okay, next item?
ZBA.
What?
ZBA.
ZBA report from...
So I'm a ZBA liaison. I'm learning a lot, more than I thought I would. And I want to thank our dedicated volunteers who go over every detail with painstaking attention. And I think it would behoove people to sort of pay attention to what they're doing. It's very interesting, the ZBA, because basically they get to decide, unlike the planning board that needs to fit within the prescribed rules of what's in our zoning code, the ZBA are where people go when they say it doesn't fit and I can, can I do something differently? And, you know, and they may or may not be successful in doing that. I wanted to let my fellow board members know that we have, we'll probably be getting a recommendation from the ZBA. I think Terry Duncan already sent you something. I don't know if he sent it to everybody, about, you know, there had to be an interpretation literally of what an "or" meant. Did it imply an "and" between a section of our code that talks about limits on the number of stories and the height of a building? And the ZBA interpreted in the way that the building inspector advised them to do. And then they didn't grant somebody a waiver that had already built something that now potentially needs to be taken down. It might be litigated, but we're going to need to change the code for clarity so that we don't run into these issues again. So we might be seeing that down the pike. And it's just interesting, you know, there's, there's some really good arguments about, you know, how you figure out, you know, if there's precedence for something or not. And they really deliberate hard at that board table and I commend them for that. But I think people, applicants need to know that our, you know, our ZBA, you know, they take our code seriously. And even though someone had actually already done something, so it was one of those, oops, I did this, I broke the code, can I have permission later? And the ZBA said, no, you can't do that. So now literally something needs to come down. So I think there's been a general, I know I've experienced the vibe in the community that we need to tighten up and, you know, execute our code in the way that it's written. And that's the sense that I get from the ZBA, that they're sort of thinking along, their actions definitely demonstrate that they're thinking along those lines.
So we got some suggestions from former mayor Terry Duncan, and I shared them with you. Do you want to kind of take the highlights from those suggestions and then send a couple of proposals to the village board and our attorney to see if we can bake them into our, into our zoning?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll do that with Brian and the chair of the ZBA.
Yep. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Security deposit law update?
Um...
Andy, thanks for brainstorming with us. But I think you were going to...
Yeah, I'm just writing down what you asked me to do. Spacing a little bit, okay. So Dennis isn't here. He's the liaison to the landlord-tenant council. And they had a meeting last week, so he asked me to fill in. I wasn't at the meeting, but he let me know what happened. Actually, before that meeting, Dennis and I talked about where we were at with this law, sort of similarly to what you were saying, Andy, you know, it's gotten a lot, it got a little cumbersome, right? A lot of little different pieces getting lopped on there. And I was sort of feeling that, hearing that from people. And I also, it's very much on my radar, I think all of our radar, that we want whatever law that we do to stand up in court. We don't want it to be, make the village vulnerable to litigation. You know, we do have an organized landlord association who's sued the village before, so that's just public, you know, we know this. So we want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in that kind of situation again. So those two things, like our draft got kind of monkey and been thinking a lot more about, you know, wanting what we do to stand up in court. And as Tim was trying to say before, you know, we keep trying to come back to what is the fundamental goal of what we're doing here, right? We, everything always gets complicated. That's sort of unavoidable. But we really just want to make it so it's not hard for landlords, or to keep, it's not hard for landlords to not give security deposits back. That's just fundamentally what we're trying to do. So what I pitched to Dennis was that we, maybe we just hit reset and we use the city of Ithaca's law as a basis. Their law's been on the books since 1992. It's been held up by case law, which basically means there were lawsuits, but the courts held up their law. So in terms of our vulnerability, using their law, we avoid some of that vulnerability. So what the tenant landlord council discussed last week was doing just that. Why don't we use Ithaca's, minimally revise Ithaca's, and take the conversation in that direction? So I did print that out for everybody. So that's sort of where I'm at. And if you want to copy, I didn't, I just realized I did, I did a little minor, minor, minor revisions, but I forgot to change Ithaca to new policy. So I know you're all, I don't know where you want to go from there. I guess we need to hear if people want to talk about it now, if you want to come back next time.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of...
That's my pitch.
So...
Well, let's see... I'm the only one that's said publicly that I am for it. So if others think that it's okay to put it on the website, that we're looking at it, I don't know. What do you...
I think that sounds like a great idea.
But are we putting it as this is Ithaca's law or this is now our proposed law?
Just in hindsight, for consideration. Is that documented, Ithaca's law? Yeah, you want one?
But what, you're talking about using Ithaca's law but making one change?
I did, and that's in that one. I added some language just to beef up the, instead of just saying good faith...
Properly documented, instead of good faith.
Yeah. And I don't want you to think that I'm not going to pay attention to what you said tonight. I will review it. I will review this if the board wants to go this route with, you know what I'm saying?
I think, I wouldn't want to put a draft document up there because it's a draft, but I think we could put a link to the Ithaca law and say, this is something that we are considering using as the base, and give us your comments. I wouldn't want to put a draft up, a draft on something we haven't passed yet, but we'll get there halfway. The one question I had, I guess the, one of the most, one of the most items that's arisen the most passion at public meetings is the amount of time that landlords have to return the security deposit before the teeth kick in. And the draft we were talking about a meeting or so ago said 14 days. Ithaca's law says 30 days. And there's also been some opinion given to us that 21 days is a proper time. So that'd be, I guess I'm curious if you're taking a position on that, KT, or...
So just to provide some context, as Tim said before, the state already says that basically landlords need to give back security deposits in a reasonable amount of time. And I believe it gives a broad range, it doesn't specify...
No, it says timely, but the definition of timely is 30 days.
It does say 30? I thought...
No, it says timely. And I think it's, the convention is that timely means 30 days.
Right, so what Ithaca's law does is codify that 30 days.
Yeah.
Right? So, and yes, our attorney has advised us that perhaps 21 days would be a little safer in terms of holding up in the courts. So that's sort of still a moving part, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I guess I could say that a little bit of breaking news from the meeting. I don't think it's likely, as likely as it was, that 14 days would be what we end up with. I think it's probably going to be longer.
And I've sort of been, you know, again, going back to the idea of like what we put in the law and what we put in our guidebook and what our council does in terms of public education. Like maybe we advise that at 14 days, the landlord doesn't have to give the money back, but maybe has to, you know, as a best practice, we advise landlords to notify tenants what their plans are by 14 days. You know, so sort of timeline it, you know, and not make it a law, but just make it a, you know, this is, this is a best practice. Honestly, like this whole conversation that we've been having, I think that we've been learning so many things from landlords and that's probably why I was probing you, like what are the different ways? Because our interests do, you know, this was just the first thing we wanted to do in this topic area or that we chose to do because we thought it was the easiest. And so some of the ideas, if they don't make it into the law, we still want to put it as part of like what we're doing as a village to communicate... it as part of like what we're doing as a village to communicate with landlords and tenants about what best practices are. So, um, my ears are wide open to all different types of feedback and we'll put it in the law if it's appropriate there elsewhere otherwise.
So what does this law really do?
My understanding is the state doesn't say 30 days is reasonable. It just says reasonable. And that's the big thing.
Yeah, so all it does is.
Um, I.
But I think my understanding is that state law is says timely or reasonable and courts interpret those concepts as 30 days. So all this law does is just.
Look, so there are a couple more things that are different.
So what does the law do?
So the other thing is that, um, in terms of the travel damages, state law, as long as the case stays at the village level or town level, the maximum travel damages is, can be is $3,000. Um, and that's pretty much, um, what the state says, right? So if you look at the wrongful retention of security deposit section, that gives more detail about how that process can ensue. Like what are, what is, how, it informs the judges, like how they can use their discretion in, um, uh, making their decisions. It beefs up, like I said, um, uh, the, um, the documentation, um, you know, I, I don't think the state law talks as much, I don't want to misspeak, but this is, this is my understanding, um, about this process that happens in the courts, um, once, um, there's a case. So it provides more guidance to the landlords, um, in terms of their decision-making. It's a little bit more wide open at the state, I guess, if I can summarize that.
So this could, this seems like it's weightier from the penalty side than what we've been proposing because it says up to triple the amount of the security deposit and together with reasonable attorney fees and court costs.
But you're still going to max out at third, 3,000 just so you know.
Where does it say that?
Because that's state law and we can't supersede that. So all this math, no matter what that math is, you can't go up unless the course goes up another level in the court system. But locally, we can't go farther than, more than $3,000.
So it's up, so it's essentially up to $3,000 or up to fees, costs and triple security deposit?
And my understanding that it is, and we should probably ask Will this, is, does that include the fees and the, um, damages, um, court costs, you know? Is that 3,000 all of the stuff that's here? It's a good question to ask, Will. I think that it is, but we should just confirm. So to go back to what we were talking about before, like the automatic trigger thing versus stuff that's up to the judge's discretion, I still sort of would like to maybe do a 29 days, have not 20, 21 days or, you know, like an automatic fee. I don't know. I don't know. I also don't want to mess with this law too much because I want to make sure that we don't deviate it so far that we lose the.
But there's no such thing as an automatic fee. Like you can put a fee in the law, but it still has to be, the judge still has to say you're owed this fee based on law.
Right. But, yeah, but the difference is the discretion. So in our version, the current version that Andy was referring to, it says automatically at X number of days, the fee is, or fine, I always confuse fee and fine, and they do have important differences, but you automatically have to pay X percent of the security deposit. This law right now doesn't have that piece. So we would need to talk about if we want to have that piece in this law. This law just has the, when you go to court, it's up to the judge. The judge can look at, this is another thing that might not be in state law, and again, I can check, is, um, can look at history, can look at the, the particular record of the landlord to see in terms of, um, these types of cases, if there's, you know, chronic behavior, chronic misbehavior, um, and can use that in their decision-making process.
KT?
Uh huh.
Are we considering their Article II as well as for inclusion?
Everything I put here is, is on the table as far as I'm concerned. If you don't like particular pieces, we can totally talk about them.
I don't have any particular specific comments, more a general comment. I feel like the original intent here was really aspirational to do something really, um, take things further. Um, and, and I understand that it, that that's problematical and it may make sense to, to go back to a, a less aggressive or aspirational approach. I'm kind of with Tim, this, this is nice and it definitely will, will stand the test of, of, of legal action, but it doesn't do a whole lot.
What if you, Miss? Sorry.
I think it does a lot, but you're right, it's not as aspirational.
Yeah, yeah.
I totally get that.
Just a comment, just a, you know, doesn't mean I know how to fix it.
Right.
It almost seems like, it makes some sense in that instead of having defined fees or fines, but this idea of up to something and then instead of us like creating a formula, using their existing formula, right?
Yep.
So we're not reinventing wheels. This has already stood the test of time. I'm, I'm kind of interested in the idea of using an existing law that has already stood the test of time and maybe just changing that 30 days. Like to make it aspirational, maybe it's 14 days or 21 days. Like tighten it up a little bit.
I'd like to push things, I'd like to push the ball down the road a little bit with this.
But then still benefit from the fact that we have a tested law.
Yep.
But tighten it.
Well, that's what was done with the plastic bad ban. We took the exact laws which were in place in three other communities or four other communities in New York State and passed that here because we knew it would stand the test of time. So it's always good if you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But I, I agree with you, Tim. I'd like to, like do something a little bit more dramatic at the end of the day with this.
So maybe we should see what Will thinks about the idea of using this law, but changing the 30 days to something less than 30?
Seems good.
Um, if people are ready to, if they're willing to talk about the other piece of it, is there interest in embedding, uh, doesn't matter, there's no judge, if you, if you hit the 21 days and you don't do this, you don't give your security deposit back or a list, um, a list of the reasons why for the amount that you're not returning, that there is an automatic charge irrespective and not needing of a judge's input. That's what we have in the current draft. Yes, a judge may need to chase somebody down or whoever chases people down to get it.
That's like, that's like someone was owed the security deposit, it wasn't returned, and then the law triggers a fear of fine. And then they say, oh, well, I guess in addition to the security deposit I owe them, I'm going to give them this additional fee or fine because of this law?
I don't think that I said that well. Let me try that again. In the, in our older version, when you hit 14 days, I can't remember what the percent is in that version right now, you automatically are responsible to pay back, um, X percent of the security deposit. I think the part in which I misspoke is that, you know, somebody may contest whether or not that was true and a judge would have to decide. But what we have here in wrongful retention of security deposit is just, um, see, even when you start talking about it, I can see why it gets confusing to people because I'm not having a really success articulating it.
You know what I used to think before I was on the village board? I thought writing laws was easy.
It's cute. Maybe we just ask Will, maybe we punt it back to Will and say, this is a piece we know is not in there and, I don't know, maybe we need to just think about it a little bit more.
Okay, so let's, as a starting point, see what Will thinks about the idea of using this law with, where are we leaning, the 14 or 21 days? We'll ask him both. We'll ask him.
I'm pretty sure his advisement was, was don't go under 21.
Why 21? Why is 21 a specific number?
Uh, they did an analysis of the, um, all the different laws in many different places to determine what is perceived as reasonable.
Who did the analysis?
Um, Will's, uh, somebody in his office.
Okay. Okay, so let's ask him about this law with 21 days instead of 30 and see what he says.
Do we want to ask him about an automatic fee or?
Well.
Cause he's gonna, I mean, he's gonna say, you took this part out, why did you take this part out?
Well.
Cause it's, that was also the aspirational part, yeah.
Yes, but the automatic fee has not been tested.
Right.
And that's the advantage of using this Ithaca law is that it has been tested.
Right. I'm just responding, there's two pieces to respond to and I think Don's accurate description of it being less ambitious. The, the ambitious part would be to have, um, a shorter, um, window in the 21 days. And in our older version is to say, um, you automatically, if you don't hit this deadline, you get, you get hit with this, um, payment that you need to make.
What do you think, Don? Do you think we're being aspirational enough if we are only changing the 21? Should we add the penalty idea?
I would like to propose both and discuss both and maybe we'll end up with both, maybe we'll not, but I'd like to have both on the table.
Okay, I'll work with Will on this and Dennis and.
Good.
Add language so that we can either, um, accept or reject in terms of the automatic fee.
Andy, if you want to come up and add something, that's fine. Grab a mic, you gotta, you gotta use a mic.
I wanted to know if there was going to be another public hearing.
We're going to keep doing this until we get it right.
So the public hearing for the, the draft law is still open.
Okay.
At some point, we'll, we'll close that, maybe at the next meeting if we decide that we're jettisoning that law altogether. And then if we use the Ithaca law, we're going to have to start a new.
Okay. And would, um, is that committee, the landlord?
Landlord Tenant Relations Council?
Yeah, is that still active?
Yes, and, and.
Will they be befriending feedback?
Yes, we're going to be giving them every iteration as we go along.
Okay. Because I, I was quickly skimming this and there are, you know, considerations given with this law, which, right, thank you.
Sorry that you have to keep all these meetings, but we do appreciate your feedback. Um, and thank you for bringing up the council again because I wanted to mention that, um, we have been in trouble keeping the tenant seats full. I especially would like you to cover this portion of what I'm saying. The last meeting that they had, they only made quorum, they need four people to have quorum. Three of the people were landlord representatives and one was a tenant representative. Um, so we're, they're having some issues, um, with the members that are, um, tenant representatives. And the whole idea is that, you know, both are represented. There's also some seats for people who don't fill in any, either of those things, um, at least one. So we really, in order for it to flourish in the way that it's supposed to, we need to fill those seats with tenants and landlords.
So the composition is three landlords, three tenants and one at-large?
Yes.
So would you?
Uh, yes.
So was the at-large person not there either at the meeting?
No, she was absent as well.
Okay. And then, um, I know with the.
But the landlords, they looked at this and they liked the idea.
So I know with the tenants, we provide some flexibility in that you don't have to reside in the village if you're, oh, I'm sorry, with the landlords, we provide flexibility that you don't have to be a village resident. Do we provide that same flexibility for the tenant seats, especially since it's trickier finding folks to, to sit in those seats?
I don't remember, I'd have to look it up. Are you trying to find all students? It's just tenants. And you got a lot of those that read your paper, so.
Okay.
Sorry, you don't. Maybe you do, maybe I shouldn't make that assumption.
But I would also say that to require, just because I live in the village, the property that resides in the village.
I'm just throwing, I'm just, I'm just adding this idea that we're having trouble finding tenants, maybe we should expand the pool. And I know that the, like Supervisor Bitez brings this up all the time in that the village has rental registration laws, whereas the town has none. And, you know, we could throw a stone into the town from where we're sitting and you could reside in a rental property that has, that has no oversight, no building oversight.
I think Bill's looking it up, did he find it?
No.
I think that the, uh, the town actually is very interested in adopting rental registration laws that are similar to ours.
I, I think the, um, the village is unique in having a college population. And there may be students who rent in the town, but that would presuppose that they have cars or they're willing to walk, you know, six miles to get to school. So I, I do think the village is, has a unique renting situation where I would really want to see the tenants on the landlord tenant relation committee be village residents. Because I do think it's, it's a different experience being a renter in the town, um, just for that reason. It's not mutually exclusive, but I think if we do, and it may be harder work, but if we do make sure, and it's like with all committees, that, that the tenant representatives are from the village, you know, it's going to be harder to do that, but I think it, I think it's worth the extra work. Because I do think that, that it is a little bit unique renting in a, in a walkable space as opposed to renting from, you know, five miles out of the center of the village and five miles from, from the college system.
Yeah, I, I would push back on that because the Cherry Hill neighborhood is in the town outside the village. There's a bunch of rental properties south on 208. You know, those are, those are areas that have a great number of, of renters that are actually closer to the college than lots of village locations.
Well, I am just concerned that we would have the risk of losing some of the important perspective that we get from, from tenants who are in the village.
I'm just worried that we're not getting any perspective because we don't, we don't have folks populate the seats right now.
I think, I think that's a, an issue across all our, all our boards and committees. I agree with you.
I feel like it's a little more exacerbated here when you have a, you know, three landlords and one tenant, you know, like there's a specific distribution that we're shooting for here, so that's.
So that's, can we double check the law?
Yeah, I think you're trying to find it.
For us, you must reside within the village of New Paltz, uh, reside within the town of New Paltz, but own property within the village of New Paltz.
So it's just for landlords, unless you happen to weirdly be.
Oh yeah, there it says. Persons representing tenants' interest as well as the impartial appointee must reside within the village of New Paltz, period. So, okay, so based on the law, we can't do it.
Well, we've got a whole new batch of, batch of students, you know, if we do reach out to the, to the student community, maybe we can solve the problem that way.
The only other comment I'd like to put in there is.
Need to use the mic.
There's a website, I think you guys have seen the site up a lot, Perchon, I don't know if you've seen them. I've spoken to the creators of that website and company and they are looking to build sort of like a community forum, like on their website, that's sort of like a balance between, for the students and the landlords and where, I know this is like not specific to the village, but if something like that could even be created, it could almost be community-based in the sense that, um, you could, you know, find out who the bad landlords are just by peer review.
Oh, that makes sense.
And that may help also disseminate. And that may help also disseminate information, you know, about these meetings, about their rights, and, you know, to use other public forums, because not many people are here. I'm, like, the only landlord, and there's, you know, tenants. Um, and I think there is a large population of people who are interested that just don't know about it.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, that's sort of a long-term goal for the council, that their section of our website will be a resource for people. And thank you for bringing that, because he talks about for a long time that we were gonna put the list of registered landlords on that site. So, people, for example, you know, you're looking for, to rent an apartment, and you go to the village website, make sure they're listed. It'll be a way for us, it'll be a resource for them to see who's registered. It'll also be a way for us to figure out who's not registered that is advertising, you know, and doing rentals.
Yeah, so, Alex, can we send a note to the building inspector and ask for the list of every property that has a rental registration, and let's just add that list? I, I think as a place to start, that should be on the village website.
That's definitely where we need to start.
And if anyone's looking for a, a, a place to rent, and they can see whether or not that property has, is registered. And if it's, and if it is registered, then they can come in and ask to see the most recent inspection report. And if it's not, then they can ask that, that landlord, "How come you're not registered?" Okay, so I'm gonna bump up my, so my rental registration form thing that I added to the end of this agenda, I'm doing that now.
Okay.
So, I, I went to the village website today because a neighbor friend who has an accessory apartment, I was chatting with them, and I asked them if they had their property registered. And they said, "Oh, we had it, you know, inspected a few years ago." And I'm like, "It's an annual requirement, you don't do it periodically."
Oopsie, they said to the mayor.
So, uh, I said, "No problem, I will get you the forms for you to complete so you can get your property registered with the building department." So I went on the website, and I clicked on rental registration form, and it's like, "Not there." So I called our building inspector, and I said, "How do we get this form?" And he said, "The only way they get it is when they, they run the municity, and then it auto-populates with the address." And I'm like, "Well, can you just print that out and then white out the addresses? And let's just put up a blank form, so people at least have a sense of what's required of them." Um, because I bet you there are several folks with accessory apartments that might even have no idea. And I, I know, Andy, you shared with me that you recently purchased a house that's a spitting distance from Village Hall that hadn't been registered ever.
Seven years, and they had students in there.
Had students in there, right, and you can see it from Village Hall, and it was never registered. So, we need to help our, our, our residents just know that they need to register their properties. And we're not doing a great job if we don't even make the forms available. So, one thing, let's definitely get that list of every property that's registered with the building department. And then also, we need a blank form on our website, so we can share with our neighbors.
And then, yes, once we have that list, we can expand on that. Maybe we can have it so, rather than having to ask for the latest inspection, you can click and see the latest inspection.
Yep.
Maybe if there's some, you know, chronic misbehavior that can be noted in some way there. Sort of rateyourlandlord.com quasi, I think. So, but again, you gotta start somewhere, so let's get that, and then move from there to be a resource. Because we don't want to just pass laws. We want to do other things that help tenants and landlords have better relations. We have 70% of, you know, renters in the village. It's a re, high number, not unexpectedly high, obviously, given that we're a college community, but, um...
Maybe we need to put a sign up, like, "How many college students walk by Village Hall every day?" We need to start ones.
Well, the Oracle's gonna write this article, so we're good. They'll call tomorrow for follow-up questions. Okay, let's do the next topic. We're, we're good with that? Can we move on?
Uh, yep.
Okay, so, I, I just want...
I think I know what I need to do.
I wanted to provide...
I wrote on your copy again.
I, I shared a note with the...
Talk about chronic misbehavior.
I shared a note with the, the village board today, because I spoke with Dwayne Posturepak. He's the appraiser that we hired to value this property as well as the Gateway Building. And we have a joint village-town board meeting scheduled for the 25th. So I asked him for that valuation report by at least the 24th. He said he's gonna work hard to get the valuation for the Gateway Building by that date. He said the valuation for this property is more complicated than he anticipated. And, uh, when I took him and his colleague on the tour of this property, I mean, we, we're all somewhat familiar with these various weird buildings, but when you go into them and go into all the various basements, and this building is such a completely ridiculously put-together combination of buildings, it's bizarre.
Sounds like the middle school.
It is so bizarre in terms of like what heats what, and what's connected where. You, you couldn't, you couldn't make this stuff up. So, just wanted to share publicly that we're anticipating that valuation report, the Gateway Building, by the 24th. Okay, uh, next item, number two. Water sourcing resolution.
Thanks, Andy. All right, so everybody should have gotten the marked-up copy. The marked-up copy was the one in the packet, there was a clean copy, but track changes accepted if you wanted to see what it looked like without track changes. Um, sorry, Bill, I didn't, I didn't get to type it in, but Bill did want to add, um, a phrase, which I just had, and I just lost. You don't have that handy?
Resilient C.
Oh, man, I thought I had well-prepared. Do you have that, that text in front of you? Oh, I found it. Um, he wanted to add "Whereas," um, and I don't know where he want to add it, so give me some guidance, I'll just read it. "Whereas the village of New Paltz seeks to be resilient in times of water interruptions and independent for its sources of water." And that would go... Any thoughts?
In terms of where it should be started, I don't think it would be "Whereas."
Okay, "Whereas the whereas." So maybe after the Walk Hill River watershed one?
Okay.
Okay, do people want me to go through this piece by piece? I did provide an annotated version with the feedback that we got from EPB. Okay, thanks for coming. Ted is EPB. I don't know how much review or...
I'm fine taking those suggestions and baking that into this resolution and adopting this resolution, because it will be a living document that we can, we can update in the future. I think it's a, it's a great jumping off point. You know, item number three on this agenda tonight. Uh, I met with the DEC recently, folks from the Hudson River Estuary Program. And then, I spoke with folks from the Benjamin Center about a DEC and Benjamin Center and village event, where we're just having a conversation about like why certain items are in this type of resolution. Uh, the idea of, of, of the value of sourcing more local water. You know, stuff that this board has been focused on for the, for the last two years. And, you know, just trying to educate our community and engage our community a bit more on this topic. So, I'm, I'm good, let's move this resolution forward. It's a, it's a great starting point, and, you know, maybe we'll see some things that we want to change, you know, after a community forum like that, or, or other things.
Well, I'm looking at KT's notes, which says, "I'm going to suggest language at the table." It includes a reference to the water sourcing procedures.
Oh, right.
There you go, got that down. And specifically, there were a couple of items, four, five, and six. Both look very good, and they are very noble and well-intended. Uh, for example, number four says, "Induce minimal disturbance to land, wildlife habitat, and biodiversity." And I think that's great, but it does, I was concerned it might, if we're gonna say minimal disturbance is allowed, that, that concerned me, and I didn't want to just leave it at that. So I wanted to add to both items four, five, and six, "And will mitigate any such disturbance to the greatest practical extent." Uh, if we break it, we fix it, just in general. And item five was recharge rates with minimal disturbance to wetlands and stream flows. And number six was induce minimal disturbance to non-municipal wells in the area of influence. And each of them, I would add at the end of the sentence, "And will mitigate any such disturbance to the greatest extent, greatest practical extent."
I'm good with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that addition, those additions as well.
I like it, I dig it.
Thank you.
So, um, can we, can we move forward with this resolution with these, with these additions?
I'll clean it up for you.
I'd like to, you know, I guess my desire would be to incorporate both item two and two A. We also have, um, what has been described as the procedures. And I'll test these out, these have been discussed by the village board on two occasions. The red font on this page reflects the changes in language made by the village board from the original documents supplied by the EPB. And, um, I, just to give people a sense of, of what this document is, there's not many items on it, but the, the subtitle is "Communication, Public Outreach, and No Surprises." And the Environmental Policy Board was very mindful of the fact that, um, there had been a, uh, there had been some efforts taken in conjunction with the backup water supply at Plains Road. It had become over the years a large, uh, public issue. And the feeling is that could have been prevented or precluded by earlier outreach, by earlier information, by, uh, earlier, uh, communication about what was, uh, what was gonna happen. And that's the sense of this, what is titled "Drilling SOP." It is, uh, and I'll just go down, since it's not out there in front of people. "Public outreach and education over speed, no surprises to homeowners potentially expect, affected. Public Q and A by hydrologists to educate the village board and the public. Second opinions: village hydrologist investigates, including site visit, and reports to the village of New Paltz on all projects, private and public-private. Early ID and baseline testing and sphere of influence, err on the side of caution. Uh, baseline testing, and this means let people know that there's gonna be some exploratory drilling. So if they want to do baseline testing to see what the before picture is in their, in their wells, to give them the opportunity. Regular meetings and communication channels with public. Environmental considerations baked in prior to environmental review. Full environmental review and potential unintended consequences checklist reviewed by village board in public before drilling at any site." That's what's, uh, that's what's informed the board. And we had, again, this had been originally brought up by the Environmental Policy Board at an April meeting. It was discussed by the last board in May, and discussed by this board in June. So I think it's been, uh, out there and under, you know, out there in front of us for long enough. We're, I'd like to move forward with this as well.
So just walk us through like the project that we're working on right now at the water treatment plant. I feel like we've, we've done these things. Would you say that we could have been doing more of them? Do you feel like we have done these things? I'm just trying to understand.
Well, that's a, um, that's a difficult example, because it's, it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, you know, not, not in a very densely populated area. Um, we have another, um, another site which is a public, pardon me, potentially a public-private partnership, uh, which is, uh, adjacent directly to the Millbrook Reserve. I think that's something that would benefit by a fair amount of outreach and discussion with the public. But on our agenda this evening is discussion of approving, uh, exploratory drilling at Hasbrook Park, uh, which is a public park, it's, uh, in a densely populated, populated area of the village. It's a heavily-used area, and I just think it's really important for us to make ourselves smarter by as much public information and information gathering as possible before we take any action. Um, I, you know, so, I, I, I think in terms of, um, those locations, Moriallo Pool Park and Hasbrook Park as areas, um, where it really would be important to have some outreach and, uh, and Q and A before we, before we move forward. I just think that's a, that's a...
Before we move forward with what?
Before we move forward with, with taking those to approve action at these locations.
But when you say "action," what, what do you view as "action"? Like drilling, pump tests?
Anything which would break, break the soil.
Yeah, I think...
But you don't, you do, but breaking, so if you, if you drill, there's... That doesn't affect the area of influence. The only thing that affects the area of influence is when you perform a, a multi-day pump test.
Well, I, uh, I think it's important, before we would take any action with regard to, for example, Hasbrook Park, I think it's important to make sure all the questions have been asked. You know, there's great concern, and I think reasonable concern, about expending money for consultants needlessly or too quickly. And there are a lot of questions with regard to Hasbrook Park. I don't, I don't know that the public has been advised in terms of, um, how long this project would take. How long would the park be closed?
You're, you're putting the, the cart before the horse, though. We don't even know if there's a project to invest, you know, to, to drill for unless we hire a hydrologist to, to look at the geology.
Given the fact that adjacent to that Hasbrook Park, there is a project in front of the planning board that envisions blasting.
I don't think they're before planning board yet, but, but everybody knows about it, yeah.
It's under public discussion, under public discussion.
Just for clarity.
What has the Department of Health had, had to say with regard to either, is it okay to drill in a location where there may be blasting next door? Or conversely, is it okay to blast in an area right next to potentially a drinking water site? I think that's a, before we spend a penny, I think that's a, that's a knowable question. The answer to that question's knowable. And I think that's the sort of basic, you know, homework that, that we would need to do. I think when you have a, see, we're, we're being asked to vote on that, uh, or, yeah, it's on the agenda to vote on that as a board, when, um, I wouldn't know, Mr. Wild, if I passed him on the street. Uh, this board has had no direct interaction in public with the well driller. I don't have the best relationship with the hydrologists that we've contracted with, but I certainly would welcome the opportunity to have the hydrologist in front of the public and in front of the board to ask questions. At this point, I don't have a single document in terms of, you know, advice to the board from the hydrologist or the well driller. There's, there's nothing there.
You absolutely get emails from me, and I, I update the board...
You didn't get that one?
All the time, based on conversations I have with the hydrologist.
Okay, you said nothing, so I'm gonna make sure you have that.
I guess we got something in the packet.
You get stuff all the time.
In conjunction...
Can I try to hear you both and chime in? I think, um, I don't think any of that stuff gets triggered until we find out if there is actually something to move forward on. And, um, this was, this was discussed actually at EPB. When you do, I feel like we need, and I started putting together a spreadsheet, but I didn't have enough time, of like, what are the steps of exploration? You know, I'm always, you're laughing at me, because I always have a spreadsheet for everything. But what are the steps, you know? One-hour test, 10-hours test, 72-hour test, you know, like, and then, you know, what are the impacts? What are the considerations? My perspective is that when you're going in to just test minimally to see if there's even something to move forward with, there's, there's not a need to answer every single question. We're gonna be looking at a lot of different places. I think that what you, we're in a disagreement on is when does all the things that you want to see get triggered? So, is it, you know, the one-hour test? Is it at the 10-hour test point? Is it at the 72-hour test point? I don't think what we, to use a specific example, are being asked to vote on tonight, triggers any of that. And I don't, I don't think it's productive use of time until we know if there's a "there" there. To circle back to the drilling SOP, I'm totally, you know, conceptually on board... To circle back to the drilling SOP, I'm totally, you know, conceptually on board with everything that's been proposed, and my feedback to the EPB on this was, if it's going to be a procedural document, there's a lot of stuff that needs more specificity. And one of my notes was like, you know, baseline testing, what does that mean? What's the definition of that? What gets triggered? Sphere of influence, when does that get determined? You know, and again, you have step tests here. I don't, to the best of my knowledge, you don't need to do baseline testing before you just see if there's a there there, because as Tim said, you don't have impacts until you do a 72-hour test. So I feel like maybe we need a one pager, just like we need a one pager on the, the other one-page rec fees, on, that would, that would provide more detail, so it really would be a procedural document about, you know, these kind of broad concepts that we don't have going on here. And I think that depending on the type of test and where you are in the process, triggers different things. And obviously, they increase in order of magnitude as you go down that, you know, some trains are going to leave the station and go far, and others aren't. I think the environmental review stuff is tricky, too, because we say in the, the previous water sourcing resolution, we do go into some specificity in that, but I just always, you know, what, so what does that mean? Like, what do you, like, that's like a really big concept for us to promise that we're going to do full environmental review. And I just, I need more detail on that. And I also think that in order to better integrate the EPB, you know, if, using again, you know, the increasing order of magnitude, I know that we haven't agreed on, well, when does the EPB come into play? When do they get review? I'd like to hear from the EPB, like, when do you think you need to be brought to the table and notified? Because if we send every single idea and none of, you know, only one of 10, it just, I think I got my point.
I want to take this question because it seems like you, you're really curious about something.
Yeah, DEP rejected the village's request for additional funds for water exploration, so where would this one be? Like, hydrologists?
No, the DEP has agreed in an agreement in principle to provide $2.3 million for, for water projects. The village's water fund would pay for the initial exploration.
Okay.
So we can explore for water, and this is what we've been considering and we're doing. We're exploring for water at the water treatment plant. We're considering exploring for water at Hasbrook Park and Moriello Pool, Pool Parkland. So let's say we find projects that merit development, then the DEP, we could use part of that $2.3 million to develop those projects.
Is that the money you were supposed to save?
Yep, yeah. So we have this really exciting opportunity to use the DEP funds to source more water locally. And that's why we're doing what we're doing as far as performing tests at, you know, these municipally-owned pieces of property. So like, I'm just looking at this list and like, early ID and baseline testing and sphere of influence, baseline testing prior to step tests. These are, these are requirements by the Department of Health. You know, regular meetings, communication channels with public. I mean, I think that's what a village board meeting is, like, we report out based on, you know, projects that we're working on. Public Q&amp;A by hydrologists to educate village board and public. I mean, again, that's what, that's what we do as a village board. So I feel like we're, and, you know, full environmental review. We can't do a full environmental review until we have a project to, to develop. We can't do an environmental review on a test. We can only do an environmental review on a project that we're developing.
Well, just like the operating procedures are a living document, I would see this as a living document also. I think it's important to put something in place early in the process, and especially before we take a step that we're envisioning at this meeting to expend several thousand dollars of village money to begin exploration. I think the, the whole point of this was to avoid the Plains Road experience. I do recall there were numerous question-and-answer sessions with the professionals. Dave Clouser was there, Russell Urbanmead was there. DEP was there with regard to that project, but they didn't kick in until after there was a problem. And the goal and the whole sense of what's in front of you is to make sure that things are, that public outreach and Q&amp;A and education by the hydrologists and by the well driller. I, I do know, we have had many emails from you, Tim, but they've come from you. And we haven't had an opportunity to sit down in public at a board meeting with the hydrologist and the well driller. The well driller, if he's been to a public village meeting, I'm not aware of it.
He definitely has not, and, and we, we don't, we don't invite our consultants to public meetings. Like, it is, we've been hired by the public to, to work with these consultants and report back. Like, otherwise, we could just have an autocrat sit here and then, and then, and then that, you know, she could just hire consultants, and then they would be the village board. But that, that's not what we've been tasked with. We've been tasked with interfacing with our consultants and reporting to the public.
But I think there are, there are technical questions and professional questions. I'm not a hydrologist or a well driller. No one at the table is here. And I think there needs to be, I think there needs to be an opportunity for both the village board and members of the public to ask questions of the experts directly, because.
And if the public has a question, they can ask the village board and will relay that question to our consultants. If the village board has a question, you can, you can send an email to Russell Urbanmead. He sends us, he sent us a bunch of reports like that that you've already received. Like, this process has already been in existence. And, and we also have two things on our, on our agenda right now that, so we're going to perform a 72-hour pump test at the water treatment plant property on two different test wells on October 16th. And we're monitoring a neighbor's well that's about 1,000 feet from one of the wells because it's required by the Department of Health. So you're saying that, well, that's kind of not an example, a great example, because there really aren't too many neighbors, like, the, the sphere of influence is, is not that challenged. And then the other project that we're looking to hire a hydrogeologist to explore is taking a look at Hasbrook Park and taking a look at the Moriello Pool property, not to drill at either of those properties, but to do the initial research to see if they're decent candidates. So I think this is a, you know, the proposal is to spend $2,700 to have a hydrogeologist look at each of those two properties, and then to spend an additional $800 to have that firm's wetlands expert to take a, take a look at the, the Moriello Pool property in case there's any nearby wetlands that could be affected. So, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, north of, you know, 3,000 bucks to hire professionals to tell us whether we have projects worth investigating.
Well, and I guess with regard to the work that's already being done at the water treatment plant, I mean, that ship has sailed. I certainly wish that we had had these procedures in place earlier, but since it is where it is and the potential effect is what it is, I, you know, that's what I was saying. It's not that I, I didn't think these procedures would be appropriate. So we're potentially going to just throw $3,000 down the toilet without checking with the Department of Health on the blasting question? That just seems irresponsible.
But why, why would we not do something that's in a developer's interest that isn't even before the planning board? Talk a little bit more about the logic of that, because if we get a water source at Hasbrook Park and we're going to source water there, then on down the road, any project that comes before a planning board, then they have to determine if that gets in the way of a development nearby.
Well, I think it's, it's possible that going forward with this exploration would make it impossible for a current development being discussed publicly to happen, or it's possible that the fact that that development might move forward might make it impossible for us to source water at that location. That's when I say it's potentially wasting $3,000. We can know the answer to that question in a week. So why would we vote to expend money when we haven't even asked that question?
This is like a crazy what-if to me.
So ask Russell. Look, I mean, why don't you just ask Russell?
Blasting next to a water well is crazy what-if?
Yeah, this is a crazy what-if, because you could say exactly the same thing, like, we're looking to, to source water from our water treatment plant property. What if the neighbor decides to, wants to build anything that involves blasting?
But that isn't the case. There's only one case and one example where there has been public presentations about a project that would envision underground parking next to Hasbrook Park, two stories of underground parking requiring blasting.
I'm comfortable saying that I'm willing to spend the money to find out because we need to find water and we'll find, if there's no there there, then we don't need to ask the question. If there is something to move forward with, then certainly.
And you don't think it's responsible to delay committing to the $3,000?
I don't think that hypothetical projects should stop us from looking every, underneath every rock and stone for water where we can find it.
You don't think it's worth asking the question at Department of Health?
Oh, go ahead, ask Russell.
No, I'm, I'm saying before, before we approve the village expending $3,000.
It's, you're talking about a hypothetical project.
It didn't look hypothetical when I looked at the 3D model.
If it was, if I felt as strongly about it as you did, here, I'll ask Tim. Can you ask Russell to ask that question?
Sure.
Thank you. So we'll get the answer.
I think we should do that before expending a penny.
Yeah, I, I don't agree.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're saying, you're saying that this SOP, like, we're already doing all of these things at the water treatment plant property. You're, you're saying like, the ship has sailed and you wish we would have done it? We've already done all of these things.
So why would you oppose to, to formalizing it?
Well, first of, we can't do a full environmental review, and we've spoken about this, I think about four times now. I don't know why this is still on this list. You can't do a full environmental review on a project or on a proposal. You can only do a full environmental review on a, on a project that you're going to develop.
Well, and that's, that's assumed by this, not that it be a full environmental review while it's still a concept. So if you'd like to add, full environmental review once project is approved, or whatever language you'd like to put in there, that's, that's fine. And I have no problem with tightening this up. But I, I think the concern about assuring people that there'd be a full environmental review, you know, I, I would want to, I would want to offer that.
Don't misrepresent. That's, that's not fair. In the resolution that we're hoping, did we pass that resolution? No, we didn't do that yet. We delineate that pretty, we talk about that a lot. So there's no hesitation conceptually to do that, so let's not misrepresent that. And I just, I mean, the EPB seemed open to the idea of more specificity and making this more of a procedural document. I don't mind, just like with the law, just like with everything, let's just take our time and make sure. Word choice is really important to me. There's words in here that are very narrow in some place and very broad in other places. In order to be an accurate document, I think those needs to be more fleshed out, like, what type of test triggers certain things, what type of steps trigger certain things? It's just too, it's too broad.
But you understand the, the real effect of taking your time with the procedures while moving full speed ahead with the exploration kind of makes it a good point.
Okay, that reminded me, I did want to say one other thing. So earlier you said, you know, at the Plains Road, the, the talking about what you're doing came too late, and you want to start earlier. I, I, I'm, I'm with you on that. Like, if this is Plains Road and this is nothing, yeah, let's back that up. But I, I want us to have a document that says when that gets triggered. And in my mind, sitting here right now, it's not when you're figuring out if places have potential at all. It's when you figure out you have a place for potential and then you, you take the deep dive.
So are we comfortable with maintaining, continuing the precedent that was set with regard to the Plains Road process, that there would be public Q&amp;A sessions with the consultants? That's something we have done many, many times in this community.
But how are these not, we're already doing this. We, we have a village board meeting tonight. It says public comment on this agenda, and we list projects. I don't see anyone coming from the public asking us about any of these projects.
Well, that's the nature of the village board meeting. We have one landlord here tonight on an issue of great interest to many, many, many landlords, but the fact that there was only one landlord here doesn't mean that there's no landlord interest, you know?
But we talk about this in the newspaper, like, the community knows that this board takes our water responsibilities pretty seriously.
So as Chazen and Clouser in that case spoke to this community many, many times at public meetings, and that was a precedent was set, we have disagreement on whether the timing was good or not. I'm not getting comfort that you want to continue that process, and that, that concerns me. There needs to be a, there needs to be an opportunity for both the board and the public to ask questions directly of the experts so they can get, you know, until they get a readout from the experts, all they're hearing is bits and pieces secondhand from us. And we're not, we're not going to give us the sort of comprehensive information that would be given in a public presentation, which would generate the questions.
But if we invited Jim Wild, who has drilled hundreds of holes in this community and his father before him drilled hundreds of holes, to this meeting, there would still be no one here asking Jim Wild any questions. But what we do now.
I'm having to defend that. How can you say that? When we had public sessions with record of drilling at, at Plains Road, the rooms were full.
Right, after they ran into, after they ran into problems, the only time people were interested is once there were problems.
Which is why we preclude the problems by doing it earlier in the process. That's, that's exactly what this is.
I hear you both. I'm not sure exactly what it would look like. You both were paying a lot more attention when what happened on Plains Road, so you have like, you have very specific ideas of, of, you know.
But KT, I also want to respond to something that you said earlier, because none of what we're doing here is complicated. What we're doing is we're taking a municipally-owned piece of property, we're hiring a professional to say if that piece of, or if that property has geological features that make it a candidate. If it does, then we would hire a driller to drill a hole. If the hole spits out some water, then the hydrologist and the driller will estimate how much water is coming out, and then they will propose a pump test based on how much water is coming out of it. I mean, it's really just those four steps. And Jim Wild and Russell Urbanmead have both told me now, they're not fans of the eight-hour test. They think you end up wasting money on an eight-hour test. They feel like they can safely estimate what pumping rate you would use if you perform a 72-hour test. So you drill the hole, and let's say it's a 40-gallon-per-minute hole, then they would leapfrog the eight-hour test and just go to 72-hour test. That's been the suggest, a suggestion of both of them. So before we can do a 72-hour test, we have to get authorization from the Department of Health and the DEC. We can't do 72-hour tests unless they both sign off.
So in the question, in the case of the Department of Health, if we ask the question before committing to spending $3,000, that would seem to be a prudent, responsible thing? If it makes no, if it makes no sense, if it's, if it's not practical for us to... If it makes no, if it makes no sense, if it's, if it's not practical for us to proceed with drilling and test drilling at Hasbrook Park because of the concerns I've raised with regard to potential blasting, if it's a dead issue and Department of Health says, "Well, that, that makes it impossible," well, that's knowable. And we wouldn't have to spend $3,000 to find it out. Why wait till later in the process?
I'm comfortable moving forward both at the same time and figuring out if, if we go to the next step. Just to go back to the, you know, the Q and I and what it looked like, I would like to hear more about what those looked like for Plains Road. And I'd like to revisit the idea. I'm open to a conversation about what that would look like. And I think it is important. I mean, Hasbrook is a park in the middle of our community. Moriello, you know, I'm always down for public education and awareness. But I also don't want to put the heart before the court.
This is also just such like a New Paltz way of doing everything. Where we, we think that we're so special and that, that, well, if you put a groundwater well, someone might disturb it by doing some construction work later. There are groundwater wells throughout the world where construction work is done next to it. And then, there, there's, there's ways to mitigate those risks. And if a, a, a construction project compromises your well, they're, like, this is not like some unique thing that no one has ever done or anticipated before.
I think which is why Department of Health will be able to quickly answer the question that's asked. So, let's try and, let's try and move on from this. Is there some comfort in, at the next meeting or next meeting or two of the village board to invite our professionals to come and speak with us and the public and answer whatever questions people have? You know, it may be that people have concerns over the very notion of drilling in a public park where there's a playground. I don't have that. I know enough where those concerns have been put to rest. But that's because I've known enough to, I've, I've been educated enough to, to know a little bit more than the average person. Wouldn't it be smart to get those questions out and get those, those, make those reassurances before we move forward rather than after?
No, because we're not drilling in a public park unless we do the research to see if it's a viable candidate. I, I think we have to spend the $3,500, including a wetlands investigation at Moriello Pool Park, to see if these are our candidate properties. Like, we, we have to do that work to see if there's even a project worth considering. I don't want to have a, a public hearing on, where we invite professionals and pay them $200 an hour to sit here and opine on a project that we might not even consider doing.
I'm open to having a conversation about how we can engage and inform the public once we have, what'd you call them, candidate properties?
If, if the money wasn't as big a concern, Tim, would you, would that make you more comfortable? If the money, if, if the money wasn't an issue?
I'm, Dawn, I'm, if we hire a hydrogeologist and they take a look at Hasbrook and they say, "Oh, it has certain geologic features." And, you know, I, I sent a, you know, I got some thoughts from Sally Rhodes today. Because she's been a big proponent of looking for water at Hasbrook Park for years and years and years. And I was like, "Sally, why do you believe that Hasbrook's a reasonable candidate?" And she was like, "Oh, well, Carol Johnson told me there was an artesian well near the, the campus school property. There was an artesian well at North Mannheim and John." There, there was also some, you know, some interesting springs identified. And I actually saw this myself. One time I was walking across the middle school field about a year and a half ago, and I saw this water dripping out of the embankment near Jolynn and the middle school. So, I called DPW and I was like, "Guys, I think I found a water leak." And they came out and they, this is what they do all the time. When they see water, they test it for chlorine residuals. And if it has chlorine in it, then they know that it's a water leak. And if it doesn't, then it's a spring. And they tested this, this water that was seeping out at Jolynn and the middle school ballfield. And they were like, "Yeah, that's a spring." And this is another area that was on Sally's list, as well as, you know, it seems like water comes out of the ground right here next to Peace Park. So, I shared this with Russell Urbanmead and he was like, "Hey, can you take a map and just identify for me these different locations? Because this way, I can look at, you know, where people think there's water in this community and then compare it with some sort of fracture trace analysis based on the properties that you own." Like, we're, we're trying to put a puzzle together using a variety of pieces. And once we have a sense of, of what might be here, but we got to pay someone to do that research. So, we have to pay a hydrogeologist to do that work. And then if it seems like, like, he might tell us, "Yeah, you guys do have water. Maybe you could yield 20 gallons per minute." Then I think we should say, "Hey, you know, we should walk away from this." Or, "It might be a better yielding well. Then, maybe we want to spend money on doing a, a test well and hiring Jim Wilde at about 12,000 bucks to do a, a test well on the location." I mean, that's how this works. You have to do certain things before you, you get to the next decision point.
So, I felt it makes a progress, KT. And I, I guess I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we invite our professionals to address the public and the board in, at the soonest, as soon as can be in time. The last village board had actually passed, in anticipation of maybe not receiving the $3 million from the DEP that, that we did secure, they'd passed a sum of $88,000 to be used by, in this budget, in this year, by this board, in areas of water exploration. And those funds could be tapped, for example, to pay for a Q and A session without, you know, without going into our, our current, our current budget. So, I, I, I think, I, I don't see the, the bad that can come from information and from, from having the chance for us and any interested parties and the, and, you know, and the public on, on TV or the internet, just to know more about what we're doing and, and maybe generate some questions that we haven't thought to ask.
So, let's bring the hydrologist to a public meeting after he's shared with us whether it even makes sense to consider either of these properties.
But there are now, we've, we've got two wells going up at the water treatment plant. We've got a potential public-private project well. We've got two more we're talking about tonight. That's, that's five different efforts. And so, I think it's, it's a good time to educate the public and also to, you know, to, to make ourselves smarter by getting the professionals in front of us to just talk about the whole, the whole issue, what we're doing, and answer people's general questions. You know, KT, you want to come up with a, a spreadsheet on, on, on the different steps of explor, exploration? That could be done just by taking notes when we have the professionals here at, at our meeting.
Well, I'd like to be planful and do that stuff ahead of time. So, what I envision is, you know, when we do bring consultants and hydrologists or otherwise, that we front-end that with some planning in that way. But yeah. So, I'm going to go with the, this, I need to process this. At our next meeting, we're going to have more information, whether or not it's viable or not. And I think we just have the conversation about what the public education efforts are going to look like, which certainly could include having drillers and hydrologists at. But I think, I think we're okay having that conversation in two weeks when we know whether or not, I mean, I'm feeling really optimistic about Hasbrook Park. What triggered the whole asking of Sally was because I remember when we were doing the daylining project, that Dave Klausert had showed me all these maps of buried water proximate to the daylining project, which is right outside at Peace Park. And he's the one that was like, "You need to ask Sally too because she's..." So, and I remembered that I had these maps from that project. We have a map of, from like 1898 or something that shows water underneath Hasbrook Park. So, I think, let's just talk about it. You're pitching this idea tonight. Let's come back in two weeks. I think we should all think about, because we should think about, no matter where the money comes, paying, you know, if we're going to bring somebody in for $200 an hour, let's be planful. Let's figure out what this would need to look like. Not a sort of ad hoc kind of thing, but like, what are the things we could do this together that the public needs to be educated about? Right? So, I'm a planner.
So, I'm glad that the chair of the Environmental Policy Board is here. And Ted, maybe we can take this document at the next meeting and try to respond to some of the concerns we've heard at the table and tighten that up.
Resolution or?
Yes, SOP.
I hope we're going to pass the resolution tonight.
So, is there a mo... Ted, I'm sorry.
I agree that SOP should be looked at, but the resolution, I think, is very good.
And thanks for your feedback on that.
Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the, the resolution?
I, there was...
I think Dawn made a resolution to...
Made a motion.
Made a motion to have, I mean, Dawn, would you accept this amendment to your motion? Like, I'm good with the idea of inviting in Russell Urbanmead from Chazen after he looks at these two projects and then reports out to us on those projects. And then we can pepper him with other questions about water investigation.
Why don't we say to invite the professionals to a meeting no later than December 1st? The first meeting in December? Does that seem like to be a reasonable time?
That's no problem.
I want to make sure it happens.
I'm fine. I, I second that motion. So, at least some public meeting time with Russell Urbanmead before December 1st. Right?
I'd love to, love to see Mr. Wilde as well, but we'll start with Mr. Mead. I want to compromise and work with you. You're compromising and I, I think that's great. Let's figure it out together.
We can ask Jim if he'd come to a meeting. I don't know if he, if he's like a public meeting guy, but you can ask him.
Great.
I, I, I have some thoughts, but I'll save them for the next one.
And on a matter of other interests, it's 1-0 Yankees.
Okay, so...
You haven't said anything.
I know.
Do you want to? Okay.
Do you want to second this Dawn's motion with a couple of changes?
With the, oh, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I motion that we, we authorize the hiring of Chazen to provide us with some analysis of Hasbrook Park and the Moriello Pool property for a total of 2,700 bucks plus an additional $800 for some opinion on wetland sensitivity at the Moriello Pool Park.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to be opposed to that.
Um, we skipped passing the water resolution though.
Yeah, we're doing that now.
Okay.
So, I motion that we approve the water resolution.
Emotionally attached.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ready?
Thank you.
I motion that we hire Jim Wilde to drill test well number six. This would be the third well and it's closest to the water treatment plant property for approximately $12,000.
Second.
And I'll, I'll add that the Chazen supervision of that test has already been paid, we already authorized payment, like, when we, it was referred to as task two, we authorized paying Chazen up to $21,000 across a bunch of different tasks. So, that has already been taken care of. But then, this is now a new motion, I, motion that we authorize paying Chazen $4,400 to do the lab work for the 72-hour pump test on October 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the, the pump test work also has been paid for with that quote-unquote "task two," $21,000 that we had already paid Chazen. So, like, the, the point is that in the future, if we do another 72-hour test, it would cost more than $4,400. Because $4,400 is mostly for lab work. So, we, we approved that $4,400? Did, did I call that question? Okay. So, what, was everyone in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the 72-hour test, lab work. Okay. Next item is the sign-on letter urging elected leaders.
Can we, can we just bump MBR up? Because Joe's been waiting all night and I, I don't... Just can we just bump it up one?
Yeah, no problem.
It's the next thing and it's already...
I was gonna, well, this is gonna be a...
Unless everybody's just on board.
This is going to be somewhat uneventful. I'm suggesting for the NBR suggestions that we hold a workshop meeting next Wednesday to, for the village board to focus on the NBR committee's suggestions.
I was going to bring up the exact same idea. Because I have a lot of questions. I might email you in between then and now.
So, you need me to be a little?
Well, that was the next question. Does that work for you?
What's the date?
That's the 18th.
Hopefully.
Really? I mean, as many people from your crew that can come, that could answer questions, a lot of my questions are like, "Why did you do it this way or that one?"
What one would that have to be?
Um, we dedicate, we have in our rules of procedure that we can call workshop...